Okay, this is the Marlington Local School District Board of Education Work Session of Monday, November 6th, 5:00 PM. Call the roll, please.
Josh Hagan.
Here.
Karen Humphries.
Here.
Kathy Krepko.
Here.
Mark Ryan. Donovan Swift.
Here.
Adoption of the meeting agenda is their motion to adopt the following agenda for the November 6th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
All right, new business.
Okay, good evening. Our first discussion point in the work session tonight is talking about our five-year forecast. That's obviously we have to certify that twice a year, so this will be coming up in our November meeting. We typically try to hold a meeting with the board prior to discuss this, so we brought, I'll hand it over to Bob and we'll talk about it.
Okay. As was presented to you here, we have the two drafts of the forecast available for you. We'll start with the one that says draft in the center.
Your guys' draft, what you're looking at is that one does not say, talk about any type of levy, it just would be the Marlington five-year forecast as is.
For the left, this one.
Correct.
Okay.
Be the one that yours will probably be draft to that side.
Okay, so this is the one we're going over first?
Yes.
Okay.
This would be our current five-year forecast that we, that is presented as of today, that will be presented at the, in the November meeting.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so this one that we have right now, um, as you can see, shows a fund balance at the end of this year of seven and, about seven and a half million dollars, $7,581,477. With an operating surplus, I know we focus on this sum, the operating surplus of $183,285 projected for this school year, which is up a little bit from what we had estimated previously. A couple important assumptions about this forecast, as you see, looking into 2025, is that you'll see in the operating transfers out, $750,000. That's line 5.050, I think, or 5.010, I'm sorry. That is smaller because that is the transfer out for the pipeline that we'd normally take out. So this forecast is assuming that we leave, oh wait, I'm looking at the wrong one, I'm so sorry, guys. All right. Let's go back to the other one.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, my bad.
Show me.
We're on the right one.
Okay, we're on the right.
We're on the right one, I was misleading you there, I'm sorry about that. Okay, so the bottom line in 2024 is still the same, 7,581,477. And you can see up in the operating transfers outline that I was referring to before, it's just status quo going out there, $1,390,901, that's the pipeline being transferred out to the capital improvement fund. There's a big bump there in 2027, an important assumption there, that's when we expect, or that's when we're forecasting, we should say we don't know when it will happen, that we'll get the amount that the pipeline owes us for the previous years that are valued at the higher amount.
But that's just a guess.
It is, we don't know when that will be resolved.
That is a guess, and Ryan's gonna talk here in a little bit, he's, you know, on screen, you know, to just kind of go in the forecast a little more details with questions you have, but the reason why we requested to put it out in '27 was because as of right now, the, based on the last Supreme Court hearing on October 24th, the gist was, there was no real good answer, you know, and I think Ryan's gonna repeat that, and that's from our legal team also, that it's kind of just sitting in limbo, would be a good way to say it, so the only thing we know that we can for sure count on is basically about the 1.3 million, which they, you know, which is a definitely a lesser amount than we should be receiving. So, as we've always said in the five-year forecast, those first three years are the most critical years, so we didn't want to inflate our forecast by any stretch of the imagination by taking an assumption, even though if you, you know, Ryan could probably jump in on this and say that the assumption is we should get, Nexus should settle sooner, I mean, even a year ago, we assumed at this point Nexus would have a, you know, hopefully it would be settled out, so, you know, we pushed that out to '27, you could push it out to '28, I mean, it's, at the end of the day, there's no way really to assume it right now in its current state, so that's where it's at.
Our expenditures are down for '24, what we projected before, I'm looking at last May's forecast.
It might be worth letting Ryan, you know, kind of jump on, let him go through his stuff, and then that way he can answer any questions you guys have, since he has, he can pull up on his screen quickly.
Okay, well, when he's going through that too, I'm also noticing the revenue is lower by $3 million than what, or, two.
Good, yeah, so go through it and ask his questions, absolutely, great questions.
Perfect, if he can be ready for those two, that'd be awesome.
Okay, Ryan, all you.
Okay, let me share my screen here. All right, so I heard a couple of questions about revenue and expenses, welcome here, show you comparison of what's changed since last year. For the most part, as you guys were discussing, you were assuming last year that Nexus would be settled because that continued to be pushed out, we have now taken that and put it out into '27, that's settled on current, so you can see the decrease in public utility here, and then as it starts to increase out, or north '28, '28 didn't have a forecast at that time. So, with that, you have some increases here, what's important to note with real estate is that you guys are actually anticipating hit the floor. As you might have seen in the news recently, counties going re-appraisal, trying to update this year, seeing some historic increases. We're seeing districts in some parts of the state increase by 70% in values, that's the highest we've seen. More locally, in some of the counties that are going through, whether it's Mahoney, Chumball County, even some going through Summit County, we're seeing anywhere from 25 to 50% increases. A couple of county auditors we talked to in the northern part of the state that are going through next year are anticipating between 30 and 35, so what we've done is we've anticipated about a 20% increase in property values, residential property values next year. What that'll do is you guys will effectively be on the 20 mil floor, I'll show you that here in a second, and so that's creating additional tax revenue for the district, which you can see in these few years here compared, this is compared to May forecast. In addition, all the revenue is up, and it is up because interest income continues to climb, and with your improved financial projections, we think that you're gonna have interest, you know, higher, more money to prolong a period of time to invest. So, biggest change though by far in working with the Treasurer and Superintendent is move out Nexus, so if you don't guess that we're gonna get it, put it in '27, if you get it sooner, that's a benefit to the district, if not, then you're planning based off of what your current revenue situation is, and so that's why you can see these decreases here. What you will see is when we look at expenditures, is the offsetting ones down here, so not only did we reduce in our revenue coming in, we reduced the transfers going out, which is why you see that these amounts here are less. Another thing is you did have, due to some of the budget reductions that the district has gone through, you have seen personnel costs decrease, so you're down almost half million dollars this year, a little bit over half million taking consideration benefits, and then that is expected to continue moving out, so definitely a good thing there. Supplies are down as well, and due to some additional contracted services that you have, your purchase services are up slightly compared to last year. And so, what does that look like as an actual forecast, if I give you a simplified version here, you are gonna see that you are anticipated to actually have a balanced budget, have operating revenue surplus for this year, which is a great thing for the district, and then moving forward, you start to deficit spend in '25 and '26, and then you can see in '27 as well. That includes the assumption that your renewal levy passes in 2026 would be, if it is not renewed, that would first, you have to get taxed for revenue to the district. So definitely, as I've worked with the district for a number of years, this is one of the better forecasts that you guys have continued, you know, since I started working with you, and continue to improve your forecast, this is definitely the most financially stable one that you've, that you've been presented with. Just to show you the effect of the 20 mil floor on the district and what that looks like, as mileage goes, as property values go up, mileage goes down, and what happens is, is you can only go right now to the 20 mil floor, there has been a lot of conversation on changing the law one way or another, there's been a couple of different proposals, as of right now, nothing has been voted into law, and there's nothing, looks like in the near future that it may go into effect, that does, probably will update the forecast accordingly. But probably the easiest way to see what's going on with the tax rates is looking at this here. This is showing you, in orange, this is your class-two property, you will not be the 20 mil floor there, this is industrial, commercial, some real property, public utility, not public utility, personal property, but real property, and some mineral, but in blue here is your residential and agricultural. So, you can see in '19, you're around 23 mils, dropped to 20.65, and we do anticipate next year that you'll hit the 20 mil floor, which will generate that additional revenue that we talked about, because you can't go below 20 mils, regardless of how much your property values go up, based on current law, you cannot go below 20 mils, so it does result in additional revenue for the district. From a state funding standpoint, you are still a guaranteed district, there's really no indication anywhere in the future that you will be coming off to guarantee, what that means is you're basically guaranteeing the same level of revenue that you did in 2020. So, just maintain that revenue there. If we do look at things like, we've talked about your, your interest income, I will show you that, that has been a source of the district's investment board fund, and as the market has allowed for higher interest rates, as long as those rates continue, we will show you what that looks like, this is a change, but what you have here in green, is you can see that this year you're expecting to generate about $459,000 in interest income, which is a far stretch, but the market was a lot different in '22, not as much funds and events, and you guys made about $39,000, so this is also generating additional revenue for the district, as your cash balance starts to go down, we did start to decrease these moving forward, as you can see in the green there. So that's your second largest other revenue outside of state, I'm sorry, third, outside of state funding and your property taxes, and tuition revenue is, is interest income at this point. So it's definitely a, a good place to be compared to where the district has been, that was one scenario that the District Superintendent and Treasurer asked to model, was continuing basically status quo with public utility being sold hopefully in '27, and you're transferring out all the proceeds of the, of the public, personal property pipeline once you receive them. Any questions on this version?
Hey, Ryan, can you talk about the, you brought up at one point in time like an expenditure detail, kind of like what taxpayers pay versus, you know, based on what they pay for property taxes versus what we get on states, you, you had some discussion with us, if you remember?
Yeah, let me download that, Paul did show that writing before me, but I'll, I'll download that and be able to show you kind of how much it cost, daily cost is to educate a child, and how much of that is the local resident property owner's responsibility, and how much of that is the rest of the, the state as well as class-two properties, so for example. Get that open for you, any other questions, we're waiting for this to open?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask it just for clarification, so the board, they don't wanna ask it, so we were, I think we had a, I know you kind of explained it with the interest income and some of the, you know, obviously the way our salaries and benefits have played out, now we have a more better handle on that, is that the reason why we had projected maybe a, a negative cash, a negative cash, not a cash balance, but a, another revenue and surplus deficit in line typically, I think it's like 6.050, how we went from May into a, a negative number to this year currently 183,000 and the plus?
Yeah, I mean, without a doubt, there's, there's two main factors that resulted, it was the, the expense reduction the district paid, alien salary benefits and some supplies, and then also the interest income, those, those two impacts definitely had an impact on you being able to have a operating surplus as you move forward in the future years, it obviously affects those as well, but then in addition, the increase in 20 mil floor also helps in future years, not this year because you're not going for appraisal yet.
No, and based on, as long as, so, based on our conversation, as long as the legislators leave us alone, next year in '25, if and when we hit the 20 mil floor, our district would, would receive approximately, probably about 500,000, is that correct?
Yeah, in the first year, and then it goes up to about, I think, $600,000 to $700,000 in the second year. But yeah, definitely, if there's any change in legislation, then obviously that's something that we're gonna have to take into consideration, we've done a lot of modeling on that already, but from right now, from what we can see, there's been no efforts to, that that's going to be, there's been efforts to bring it to a floor, but for a final vote, we have not seen that yet, so if that occurs, then obviously that, we have to report out the revenue projections.
Well, SBA's putting out a lot of information on that too.
Well, they, the legislature was originally doing a vote to change it, so it was kind of right around that same October time, so I knew that there was some, really couldn't get a clear picture until they kind of put everything on hold, because they were looking at maybe dropping the floor to 18, to doing some type of sunset rule where, you know, you'll get so much in and then change it, but it really affected so many districts statewide. Alan Harold said on a positive side with us, the reason this came up was back to what Ryan said, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, you know, many of the auditors, the potential thought is many of the auditors in southern Ohio basically was not keeping up with the inflation rates for, you know, when they, or the, when they did their annual checks or the triennial, so they had those massive jumps, which obviously taxpayers were very, homeowners are like, are you kidding me? Where at least around in this area, they've been pretty consistent about keeping up with, as the, every three years, whether it was, so ours wouldn't be any, any significant helps us, but at the same time, it's not gonna be 70% or something, but they're seeing some of those things down south. Did you get that?
Yeah, there's definitely some overarching, you know, housing market affected those increases, there's some, some things going on with lower poverty areas and investment, corporations from out of state coming in and increasing housing values, and then also, you know, just not as much in previous years. Definitely unprecedented, nothing we've seen before type of increase in percent.
So, just, just to clarify then, that, that's included in the forecast, us hitting the 20 mil floor for 2025 and 2026 and so on?
Yes.
It is, and we're anticipating, we projected a 20% increase in residential values, it could be more than that, one thing we know is it's based off three years of data and two years already complete, you know, with a lot of counties in the area seeing north of 30% increases, the reason we thought, you know, 20% is that you already have two years complete, the market has not gone down, maybe not selling as much, but still prices are remaining relatively stable, that going into it, you could still anticipate and see an increase based upwards in other counties, say that they think it could be that year, given not heard from Stark County yet, we thought that 20 was not, not extremely conservative, but not overly aggressive number to put in there.
And, and that equates to an increase on, you know, the real estate tax bills currently then, correct?
That would, yes, for residential taxpayers, it'd be a different amount for each, you know, depending on each person's value going up, but yes, that would be an increase in taxes to the residential taxpayer. And once again, showing you this visual here, this is the increase, it's five, half of it next year, it is based on calendar year, so I kind of spoke earlier, it's half a million dollars next year and then 921,000 the following year, if you were able to get a, if you had 20% increase in values. If it's more than that, that number goes up, if it's less than that, that number goes down, and then you'd also throw in the home sit and holdback, so you're actually up annually, you know, a million 60,000 based off these, plus you have some of your emergency as well, so almost 1.1 million.
Excuse me, Bob, can you put into the notes that Mr. Ryan has arrived?
Got it. Did you have that slide up, the one I asked about, did it pull?
Yeah, and so, if you look here, based off the district's general operating expenses on 180 days school year, it costs about $74 a day to educate a student.
Yeah.
Does it include things like youth service or federal grants?
Nothing popped up on the screen.
What's that?
Nothing popped up on the screen.
Oh, let me, where you hear that? There, you can see it now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. It's about $74 a day is daily cost for people to educate in general operating fund, so not your youth service fund, federal grant fund, connectivity funds, just the general fund, and of that, the, the resident property owner pays about 26% of that. So I think that, you know, comes out to around $33 a day or so, is the cost for the average, could be daily cost to educate a pupil, $74, and then, yeah, oh, sorry, $19.24 of that, my calculation, is what the resident pays of that educational purpose. Any questions on that? Some other good useful information here, as we look at days of cash on hand, using the 365-day calendar, you know, you can see the district still has a good chunk, it's been pretty sustainable now, and you can see as that cash goes down, how many days of cash on hand you have moving forward, but still 3.26, having 87 on hand, and then when we look at things like, back here, also included some of the, the non-resident, or students that went to non-resident schools, like charter school group enrollment, you can see these that were projecting the district remain relatively flat moving forward, wasn't a little bit of an increase in '23 to '24, and then expect that to, to level out. Any other questions I can answer on that?
Okay, so, the next thing that Ryan's gonna talk about was, I guess, so this will be jumping around and within this work session, which is fine. Obviously, you know, part of us having a discussion about future money, all right, so obviously it's a good time with, with Ryan being with us to give a good explanation of what future money would look like if we asked our taxpayers for any new money. So obviously, there's, there's two different types of money, you can obviously oper, ask for, which, which would be operating money, which could go for salaries, benefits, your operational costs of the district, basically that's, say, 80% of how we run our district runs on operating money, or there's permanent improvement money, you know, which is basically for the maintaining and upkeep of our buildings and general infrastructure, things like that that we currently do. So, our district currently has a PI levy that was passed in 1999, and new operating money was last passed in like 2003. And it, we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get into that discussion, so basically, I, I have said since I started almost, you know, 16, 17 months ago, we had to, if we were ever gonna come to a time, we were gonna ask our community for money, and I would make a recommendation, we at least needed to be frugal about it, we needed to make sure that we took a good look at our purchase services, we took a good look at our staffing, and we made some decisions before we would ever do that, and then, you know, I think as a whole, we've done a good job of that in the last 15, 16 months. I don't want to be in a position that some of our area districts in, where you're getting to a point where you have to ask for something that is so big that it's gonna be hard for anybody to swallow, and on top of it, have to make it threatening. By any means, I don't want any of those conversations. So I, I would like to talk about what a small amount of money would do to our forecast. So I thought the simplest way to do this is very simple, you know, the, the mantra is, you know, you hear it from anybody that talks to you, said that the district should live within their means, if I have to live within my means and my budget, then you should be able to live within your means. I mean, I don't know how many times I've heard that from area residents, regardless of inflation or anything else, regardless if people get raises or don't, at the end of the day, you know, we usually make a comeback of, oh, we haven't had new money in 20 years. Well, that's, that's true, but we've also had influxes of different types of money that's been able to offset us and keep us afloat, but I also agree that we do need to live within our means, so if we want, to me, if we wanted to live within our means, then leave our operating money alone. So, currently, because it's in limbo, we, as you can see on the forecast here, we basically receive about 1.3 million dollars from Nexus, which we wisely use, it immediately gets transferred out, so it does not affect our forecast, because we use it for capital improvements, we use it for buildings. So, basically, I asked Ryan, and Bob and I asked Ryan, if we asked our taxpayers for 1.3 million dollars, roughly, 1.4, 1.3 in that range, you know, for what would that look like? You know, specifically if we just asked it for buildings, let's just say we left our operating money alone, let's just say in a hypothetical world, Nexus money, or the money from Nexus comes into our operation budget, and we just leave it be, because it's our operating money, that's what the state says we should be doing with it, operating. Now, we choose to move it out because we need to, because we're helping, we're basically using it to maintain our buildings, which is perfectly fine. So at the same time, if we ask for this 1.3... That's not the point, the point is how much, if I don't ask for any new money, I don't want to ask the public for new operating money, I want to live within my means, but if we did that, we still need money to maintain our buildings, a small amount. So it's, so if we're saying, let's just use the, I just used the example of Nexus, that's all I asked Ryan to do, let's just say we brought in 1.3 million dollars back into our operational budget, what does that do for our forecast? So that's the, that's the next page that you guys have right there, the draft that is...
Drafted in the...
In the middle, the draft is in the middle on this one, and Ryan, you can go ahead and take it from there, if I said that right.
Yeah, so essentially, if you passed the knowledge levy that was about the same as your Nexus revenue, and the district decided to maintain the Nexus revenue in the general fund, what would that look like, if that levy passed, you know, for tax year '25, collection year '26, you'd get, I'm sorry, collection year, tax year '24, collection year '25, you'd get half of that revenue in '25, wouldn't have an impact on '24, and you wouldn't only transfer out half next year of the money you typically transferred out, and then none in '26. You can see here, the district would then have an operating surplus through 2027, you may ask, well, why does that number go up to 1.5 million in 2027, that's, that's operating surplus, and that's because of that, assuming that payout occurred in '27 for the pipeline, that's what you would get there, and then you'd just slightly start deficit spending in 2028. So obviously, under this scenario, provides a much more, probably one of the most fiscally stable situations the district's been in in a very long time, no change in '24 because that revenue wouldn't come in, half that revenue would come in '25, so you would not transfer out as much, and then transfer out nothing in '26 to '28. All other variables in here are the exact same as the forecast that was presented earlier.
So that's, so basically what I did was basically say, what he's saying is, you know, obviously if we, if, if we asked if I recommend to the taxpayers, or ask the board to recommend to the taxpayers, 1.3, 1.4 million dollars, basically what Nexus brings in, that we would like to ask them to vote in for building, permanent improvement for buildings. which basically, they're controlling that money. That money can't be used for operating costs. That money can't be used for going out and giving raises to our staff or anybody else. It's got to be used for the infrastructure and the maintenance of our building. Basically, what we're saying is that we're going to, if it would pass, we would leave, the request would be to leave the operating money alone, leave NEXUS where it goes. It goes in anyways, we just leave it there. But we really wouldn't start that till 2026. Because even if it would pass in 2025, we'd only get half of that money, so it would be like a half transfer. We really wouldn't start seeing full NEXUS transfer till 26. It basically leaves us, if you look there, about almost a $10 million cash reserve. And, you know, like I've always said, and you could go back and watch me online and Bob, the first three years of the forecast are the ones that are, need to be fairly accurate when it comes to standards with ODE. Year four and five really changes historically, every single year we have a forecast. So, you know, it may say in 2028, we looks like we start the deficit spend for $400,000. Historically, our district has shown that that is not inaccurate because it always changes, because it's too hard to do that. You know, I don't know how many retirements and things are going to change in the next five years. The other piece about asking for, say, permanent improvement money is, you know, if you ask for operating money, that gives you an opportunity to add more if you want, or do more if you want. No, I'm going to continue to live within our means. You know, we're asking for something small, you know. And we can get into that discussion, we talk about it if we, when we get to that point. But I wanted to let you guys ask Ryan any questions about the second projection because it was just basically, if we got an additional 1.3 million, what would that look like? Or leaving NEXUS alone, basically, which looks very well. It does a lot for our forecast.
So would it be a replacement levy? It would take the place of the one that gives us 500,000 a year?
No.
Would be in addition to it?
Correct. But only for a set amount of years that you would want it. So you basically could set it between one and five years.
So effectively, it would be 2 million a year and...
Effectively, would it be what we have right now? So effectively, we're getting a little over 500,000 in PI that we, so in 1999, the community passed a permanent improvement levy for 2.2 mils, which at that time brought in probably more money based on the millage at that time. But as we move forward, your millage, 2.0 millage stays the same, but what you bring in is different. So effectively, it's probably a little more than 500,000 now. So if you match that same amount with NEXUS, then yeah, then you would be effectively doing what we're currently doing right now and maintaining. So in 2027, our loan leases paid off. So really, that's about 800,000, I mean, roughly, that we're paying a year. But once that comes off, you're effectively saying you're going to have 2 million dollars to continue to maintain your five buildings in the district on, you know, an annual basis, which is significant. And we're not asking for operating money. We're still living within our means. And it's not like I'm sitting here saying, hey, I want more money to add additional things. That's not what I'm saying. We, if time comes, we want to add something additional, then we need to have the funding for it. And then we also need to continue to look at our staffing year by year, look at our, you know, enrollment and so forth, and see, you know, what we need to do, no different than our purchase services. And again, this is just a discussion, you know, that we met, I'll tell you where I stand here at the end.
And it would be a renewal as well. So as we do more repairs, if we don't have the need for it, we could change it in the future.
Correct. So you could actually, if you got to the point, once '27 was over, and you're saying, okay, well, do you need 2 million dollars per year for that? You could take your older levy in '99 and just say, you know what, as a board, I'm just going to drop that off, you know, continue to use the newer millage, and then the tax... There's a lot of options you have. And the only reason I like the PI option, or permanent proven option, is A, it doesn't affect the 20 mil floor, and B, it basically puts it, you know, in the hands of the taxpayers, which is something they want, based on what I've been told over the course of many years. Sorry, Ryan, there. Good meeting. You guys have more questions for Ryan, I'm going to leave him on.
I'm good.
Looking at the two forecasts.
We don't need Ryan anymore tonight?
I don't think so, unless somebody...
Ryan, I guess you have your leave. Thank you very much for helping us out, and appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, well, I'm going to jump around. Since we're already on this discussion, our minds are already on that. You basically, in your package, you have like, what our forecast is going to be presented in March, which is the one, the first one you went over. That's the one that's going to be presented to the state, because that's the true forecast, okay? So that's where we're at. Obviously, then the other one is the draft with the levy scenario. I personally do not want to be, you know, even with a solid forecast right now, I do not want to be in a position a year from now, two years from now, where we have to ask for something that's just not passable. I mean, it's just, it's just not going to work. A large levy has never worked in this district since I've been here. I mean, obviously, they passed an 8.9 mil levy in 2003. You know, that was the last levy that was passed for operating costs. In my meetings over the last year, in my township meetings, they basically have said to me, you know, if you're really ever going to look at something new, any type of money, please make it appropriate to what we, the community wants, is what they've said. You know, basically, be conservative, or in other words, smaller. This, I feel, is as small as I would be comfortable going, as if you talk to a treasurer, you always want to kind of look out five years and where you're at, you know. So if you brought in 1.3 million or 1.4 million dollars, you really want to try to get through all five years in a surplus. So in that second scenario, it says like a negative 400,000 possibly, which I guarantee will not be that, but that's where it projected. You know, Bob's like, I'm very comfortable with that answer because we're carrying almost a $10 million cash reserve carryover, you know, and that's a very hard target to project five years out. I'm a firm believer that you got to know what to ask for and the time to ask for it, and I think it is not a bad time in March to ask for a small levy. We did talk to Alan Harold and John Oats, basically what a mil is. Net is about $500,000 for our district. So gross and net are two different things. So, you know, we could, you can, and we'll get the exact numbers if you guys, and, you know, would allow us to move forward with a, to get it certified for a levy. But a mil brings in more than 500,000, but because of NEXUS and how things are evaluated, we only get a net cash on that. So he told me it's about 500,000. So you would figure if you went three mils, it's probably 1.5 million dollars. This is an estimate because it's not been certified by the auditor. So I, three mils to me was a number I didn't want to go to or touch. So I was really, you know, I'll give him a number, but I'm guessing we're probably going to be somewhere in the range of about 2.8 to 2.9 mils. After Bob and I doing a lot of discussion about this, back and forth, I think permanent improvement is the way to go. It does not affect the 20 mil floor. I'm hoping the legislators leave that alone. I don't think they will, I think they're going to change it. So I think that's going to affect our forecast. I also think that it's allowing, if it would pass, and you guys recommended it, and the taxpayers would approve it, then, you know, leaving our money that comes into operations alone, and we don't transfer out, will get us to where we're at, you know, will safely get us out to where we need to be, at least for another five, six or more years. And it could be more than that. I think it'll be more, it's just, I can only tell you what the forecast says. But in the last one, two, how many forecasts this for me now, this would be five, four? I mean, we've historically trended better because we take a good look at it.
I assume we're going to keep the same standard of looking at the buildings and really paying attention to what needs to be done and staying on top of repairs instead of waiting for a disaster?
Correct. Because currently, if we don't transfer out what we're doing, we can't maintain the buildings like we are. Okay, so really, if the board just said, no, let's operate within our means and leave the pipeline money in there, well, we would not be able to afford, A, to pay back the loan, and B, do any maintenance whatsoever. So, you know, we've made it, as a board, we've made it very clear that, you know, this is something we're working with, and we want to continue to show the community that we're working that way. Then obviously, I think the best thing would be to ask for money to continue to operate that way. So we operate within our means, with our operating budget. You know, you can't say in one breath, we need you to operate within your operating budget, but then take 1.3 million of my operating budget away. Now, I understand why we did it as a board and the decision that was made at the time. And obviously, no one anticipated it being tied up in court for as long as it is, you know, because I think original discussion was, if it wasn't, we would be bringing in well over 2 million dollars, and we could pay back things quicker, and there's a lot of different scenarios that could have played out in the conversations that you guys had. But at the end of the day, none of that came true. We're getting about 1.3 million, and we need it, and that needs to stay there unless we find some type of new revenue. But you can also see in the current five-year forecast, you know, we are projected deficit spend $339,000 the following year, 1.3, 3.6, 3.7 million dollars, which eats away our cash reserve. Where with having our operating budget left alone, you know, we're in a positive cash balance till '28. But, you know, somebody, I've made these comments to some townships that we're going to talk about the levy. I've gone to my staff and said, there's going to be a conversation about, a discussion about a levy. I think the only common theme question I got was, if the board would choose to ask for a levy in March, what are the consequences of failure? And I said, none. That's the position I don't want us to be in. This is why a small amount, asking now, doesn't put us in a position to say, okay, well, here, I need to threaten you to pass a levy. Hey, we're going to do this. Or similar to area districts where we might have to raise pay-to-play at $950. Or do those types of things that are, you know, those are drastic things for taxpayers or parents. I don't want to be in that position. I just, I'm excited with the direction our district's going. Ryan Gazini and Bob have just done a good job of just getting us to where we need to be, and then our conversations with purchase services and staffing has really helped. I, please, ask me any questions if you, and this is why we're going, it's a work session. Don't feel like you're holding back. If you have no interest in this at all, that's fine. These are just my thoughts.
In your conversations, and, you know, as you said, all the inferences or what we've heard from the community, and live within our means and et cetera. If you talk, or if there's conversation about a levy, and you bring up, I don't know if you said this clearly, but I'm asking this to be clear. You know, is that, is the response that you get, yes, we would support a permanent improvement levy over an operating levy, or does, is that not said at all?
The people, the, any taxpayer that I have asked that question to, which is not a lot, okay? Just as a general. If Marlington was going to ask for money, would you prefer an operating or PI? Now, some said right off the bat, I would only want PI. If I'm going to vote for anything, it's going to be PI because I want, you know, it's, they know where it's going. Some have said operating, and because they know it's a need. And then I explained to them that if we didn't need operating because we left this in here, but we do need money to maintain our buildings, would you look more that way? And they said, oh, absolutely. It's just, they didn't know that. You know, so it's, to me originally, if you would ask me a year ago, I would have said, yeah, we got to have operating money. Look at our forecast. At some point in time, we got to continue to make cuts based on attrition and look at purchase services. We're going to need operating money. It's just, it's inevitable. You know, it didn't, it just, you know, it just kind of hits you sometimes to say, hey, if we just left our NEXUS alone, because I just don't ever count that in, you know, because even though it goes in, we transfer it out. You know, and it still boils down to, it's supposed to be in our operating budget, and it needs to stay in our operating budget, in my opinion. More questions, please.
Are we going to do the discussion with the high school roof and then go back to the discussion on the levy?
I can't.
Oh, that's how it is on the agenda?
No, I said I was jumping around.
Are we jumping?
I jumped, only because we were already in that mode of discussion, because Ryan, I didn't want to leave Ryan on the screen to go back and forth. But if you want some time just to kind of think about stuff, I can jump over to the high school stuff, the high school roof and that stuff too. It doesn't, that's fine. It's not any set order in the work session. I just kind of threw them in there.
Well, I think those are, I mean, I just want to comment that there were great comments that he said, you know, regarding the, you know, one of the better forecasts and most stable, one of the most stable forecasts. So definitely, things have headed the right direction, and I think that's great. I mean, that's what we have to keep doing.
It's at a point, we've also been blessed with, you know, it's always that, the higher interest rates right now that's going on in the economy is obviously helping us a ton. I mean, there's no secret, you know, that's helping us. Bob's putting a lot of that in this, and the secure funds are able to bring that on. You know, if the legislators leave it alone, the 20 mil floor is going to help, you know, on that end of it. But it's interesting that, yeah, it's just, it's all kind of, as long as legislators leave things alone, and NEXUS can kind of settle itself down a little bit, and we can still continue to maintain our buildings, this district's going to be financially strong for a really long time.
And we've been getting grants, and I want to ask, is there any, any, do we have any penalty? Is there any penalty of any sort that we get for getting those grants?
No, I can't think of any downside associated with them. You know, each one takes a little work to set up and get the accounts set up and so on, and some more reporting. But it's really wonderful that the teachers and others are applying for these and getting, even the small grants, they all help. You know, we just had one recently, one of the, one of the elementary principals got one, I think, from Walmart. I want to say it was for $2,400 or something like that, just to help with supplies, you know. That goes a long way to help them. So add those up, that half-million-dollar safety grant we got last year that Nick helped establish, Mr. Evanich, that's huge. We did a lot of work with that to increase safety. So, no, we, grants are a great thing. I'd like to see more applied for.
On that same note, is there any effect on keeping the NEXUS pipeline money in the general fund? Does that affect any of our other funding?
It does not.
No, not at this point.
Because it comes in as operating money to begin with.
And as we said before, you know, we kind of broke down the irony of NEXUS is, you know, the state still thinks it's, we should, it's a two whatever, you know, the state foundation money, we're actually getting less because they're assuming we're getting two, two and a half, three million a year, even with the depreciation. Because somebody says, well, NEXUS will depreciate over the years, but depreciation is very small over the next 20 years. You know, you're really having a consistent amount for some time, you know, as you go, as you move forward. So it's really going to be more dependent on our enrollment, what programs we have or don't have, and basically, the direction the board wants to go when it comes to programming. You know, do we want, do you want to, you know, stay where we're at, which is fine? Do you want to continue to add? know, stay where we're at, which is fine, do you want to continue to add them, do you want to look at the right avenues to add, or are we willing to go into, you know, spend a little bit more money to do things? And that's just, we're not quite there yet, I think we'll get there, but, you know, we're only, you know, a year and a half in here, so.
So, Bob, I don't know if you can answer this one, on the 20 mil floor, the increase in revenue due to that isn't, would that be considered the equivalent of a 1.5 to 2 mil levy?
With the...
If we hadn't had the, hit the 20 mil floor, the additional revenue we're receiving due to that, i- is that basically the equivalent as if we had just ran a levy for 1.5 to 2 mils?
One mil.
One mil?
Yeah, closer to one, I think.
Closer to one, because next year's about 500,000, the following year's only going to be about a million, 1.1 million maybe is where he's at, which would be the continuance on the 20 mil floor.
Weren't you saying that a mil was the equivalent of 500,000?
The 500,000.
So, I mean, that'd be about...
Two mils, but at the same time, as, interesting enough, I, it took me a while, you know, I got a list of school districts at one point in time, and in a meeting that, you know, there's, I would say at least over half, maybe a little more than half of our surrounding districts have been on the 20 mil floor for some time. It's part of the reason why they're able to, you know, have such a large cash balance carryover, even with them still passing levies. You know, it's, it, it all depends on how you say it, so at the end of the day, you know, over the years, as they've done their triennials, your taxes have gone up, okay? That doesn't mean that this, we haven't got the money. So, again, realistically, regardless of the 20 mil floor or not, their taxes go up, I think that's where it got a little confusing, when you said, "Well, they're going to be taxed, you know, they're going to pay more taxes," and they're paying, they're going to pay that either way.
That's when the valuation goes up.
Correct.
So, your, your property is worth more?
Because a lot of times, they call it like phantom revenue, I think you've heard that, and I can't really explain it very well, but at the same time, you know, a lot of times taxpayers will say, "Hey, my, my property tax just went up," you know, maybe
You've got more money.
250 and a half or $500 this year. So, obviously, the schools got my... But, but the schools only get so much from the original mileage until you hit the 20 mil floor, either way, those taxes are going to go up.
It's confusing too, I think, in the sense that some properties might increase more than others, you know, just depending on the neighborhood or other factors, and so, um, you know, if, if one's house goes up a lot in value, you're going to pay more taxes accordingly, regardless of where the school sits and, and that. But just to clarify the one question you had about how much that's worth, because I made a note when Ryan was presenting, for next fiscal year, fiscal year '25, what we have in the forecast right now is the assumption that property values would go up 20 percent, and that equates in our forecast right now to an increase of $517,756, which is strikingly similar to what one mil generates.
But you could put in perspective that, yeah, so you would say you're getting two extra mils because we hit the 20 mil floor, which is just a benefit to our operating, correct? Even without the 20 mil floor, because I was not anticipating, we kind of knew it was out there looming, I wouldn't change my thought on the size of the levy or the type of levy, it just, we just need to maybe operate a little differently, you know, I just think it'll vary, because I, if you ask Alan Harold, he's going to tell you that the legislators are going to change this formula, you know, and he doesn't know what it'll be, but they've been very active, and there's a whole lot of advocates out there to make sure, including from the auditors in general, to make a drastic change to this, and any change to the floor is going to hurt Marlington. So, it's, you know, I, I just, not to be doom and gloom, but it's always, we got, I'd rather be on air on a side of caution, you know, because I don't, I'm not 100% sure that that's going to pan out the way that it's forecasted, but we can only forecast facts right now. Good question.
So, your, your, your estimate or your prediction or guesstimate is that folks would go for this permanent improvement over an operating levy?
It is.
How would, how would we market that? I know there'd be a third, third-party campaigning, or we would recruit someone to do that, right?
You would have to have a levy committee, I, there's, the, the...
So, that would be the, that'd be the push, on what you're, what you're thinking is, make that a big, a big deal, that it's permanent improvements for the buildings, the upkeep, and people would, would buy into that more than an operating? I'm just, I, I'm, I'm somewhat skeptical, I mean, I, I believe you, you know, I, I just, the general mood is not raised, you know, people don't want their taxes raised, no matter what it is, but...
Understood.
It's an interesting angle, in my mind, that, I, I think it might, it makes sense, it makes sense to me.
But it's just, we've, we've never asked for PI by itself, I mean, most of the levies we've gone at in the last 19 years have dealt with, you know, newer buildings, which we understand we're not doing. The last levy that failed was operating, I think it was 7.6. That went down, um, which was, you know, which would have brought in a net, net, I think about 3.1 million, that could be off there, somewhere in there, I'm really trying to fog my brain, you know, that, that was not received well, and it's either not received well for multiple reasons, one, Mark, you're spot on, that they just, you know what, we're not, we don't want our taxes raised, plain and simple, or two, because it was not communicated very well, or a combination, we don't want our taxes and it wasn't communicated, or a combination of all three, we don't want our taxes, it wasn't communicated, and your administration did not really make any type of change to their operating protocols at all. So, it's hard to say, who you ask, the, you know, and I'm not saying that, what I'm saying is a guaranteed golden ticket either, I just, I think small is definitely better than big right now, I think if small wouldn't work, Bob would say, "No," because that's his job, he's saying, you know, "No, you know, you got to have at least this much," I mean, that's his, his mantra coming from ODE, so it's, I don't, if you go big and then you go smaller, what are you telling your taxpayers? You didn't need it, you know, at the same time, it's, you know, why didn't you ask for that smaller amount the first time instead of going here? And at the end of the day, we're still in recovery mode to a degree, we're still trying to build back trust across the community in some shape, way, or form. Operating money typically entails people just tie it to salaries, that's what they do, that's how they think about it, they just say, "Oh, your operating money, all you want to do is give more raises to teachers," not that our teachers don't deserve the raises as we all know. Permanent improvement money puts it back in the hands, in my mind, it's a simple way of putting it, it puts it right back in the hands of taxpayers because you're going to use that money for infrastructure and buildings.
And to tag, tag on to what Dan was saying, especially having worked at the department and looking at forecasts, we'd see the error made by some districts sometimes to ask for too little money, they get it, and then two years later, they're asking for another levy because they undershot what their expenses would be or other things. And so, when I first saw this draft of the one with the PI levy in it, in year five, which is 2028, it shows an operating deficit on line 6.010 of 1.4 million dollars, and so normally what we'd like to see is that you're, you don't have an operating deficit in year five if you're going to have a levy, typically that's what you go for. However, like Dan mentioned during the presentation, at that point in time, we're projecting a pretty substantial cash balance, like over 9 million at that point in time, so that kind of tells me we're still okay with a small levy like this, even though normally, I would say to have a levy large enough to get rid of that operating deficit in year five so that your forecast shows you're living within your means throughout all five years of the forecast. But we'd be dipping into the cash reserves in year five with that size of a levy that's being projected.
And I, and I personally don't know if that even is accurate, because our five years out, and all, all our forecasts has drastically changed as we presented back in August, you know, I mean, if you go back 13 years ago, we'd be, you know, 10, 12 million in debt at this point based on projections, and it's just kind of, you know, works its way through. And if you, and I'm, I'm a big person to look at, you know, you kind of look at the age of your district, the age of your staff, things like that, you know, I mean, we are, you know, in the next five, six years, five years, you know, we have, we have a lot of staff members that are just at that, they're not quite ready to retire, but they're going to hit that 35-year mark, 34, 35-year mark, so, you know, as teachers go, we're going to need to replace them, but, you know, it's, the replacement cost saves money. I mean, right now, we, I don't know how many we've done in the last few months, certified teachers that have asked for retirements, I think at least four or five, you know, we're projecting maybe seven or eight from what we hear.
Yeah.
I mean, even if I replace all of them, because it's a need, you're replacing one at, you know, at this cost, and this one at this cost, which is what you always try to do, it's not a perfect system, but that's what the goal is, it's going to save you money. And, you know, we haven't even really put any of that in there to have that discussion yet.
Yes, in case it helps for reference to you, I just wanted to point out, Dan had mentioned earlier in his presentation that it was in 1999 that our PI levy was passed, that was voted for two mils, its effective value right now, or at least for 2023 when this first came out, it's almost a year old now, but was 1.077 mils is what it's been reduced to, so we get just a hair over one mil's worth of PI at this point.
So, in your mind, there's no different timeframe than next year?
No, I like March only because, again, it's not a threatening levy, it's just an honest levy of where we're at, and it'll, and back to Mark's point, it, it'll give me, and honestly, a gauge, if we communicate what exactly it is and what the use of it's for, and it'll give us a gauge of where our community is right now, we have not asked for small, if the community wants to not support permanent improvement levy, which would be my recommendation, for 2.8, 2.9 mils, whatever the auditor would come back at that value, then we'll reevaluate from there, but we're not in a position to turn around and have to put out information that says, you know, "Hey, if this doesn't pass in March, we're going to have to, you know, cut 23 teachers," or, you know, "Raise our pay-to-play program," or "Cut our busing services," or things like that, you know, we'll still continue to look at our retirements, we'll still continue to look at our purchase services and our bus routes and things like that as they come up, and if we can continue to cut, we're going to do it, I mean, safely, I told you, without injuring the district, I think I've used that hurt, injured enough analogy, but, uh, I think it'll gauge, it'll give me a gauge, it'll give us a gauge as a board where the community's at, I really do, because you, Mark could be 100% spot on, the community just says, "Hey, I don't want more taxes right now," and that's fine, but I can tell you, the community's been very, as you're fully aware, they've advocated for their, their five buildings and to continue to make, maintain and keep the upkeep of those buildings, well, that's exactly what this money is for, and then we leave our operating money alone, that, that's pretty much the message that will be said consistently. Now, there will be questions along the way, what we can do or not, and they may, they'll come up tonight, whatever, and we'll just talk through that, but that's kind of the direction I'm leaning, unless you guys just say, "No, just, you know, leave it alone," you know, that's fine, too.
Anything else, anybody? Right on that limit. Talk about the roof.
Well, last year at this time, it's, it's interesting, we do have to talk about the roof, because if we're going to move forward, continuing to get this roof taken care of, you're kind of going to have to make a, we have to make a decision come November, because they need time to plan and order to be ready to go. So, as you, as you recall, when I came on board a while ago, I said this would be a three-phase project. So, in your packet, kind of look at this one here, that it has a date probably, it has a drawn by Sarah Butler and a date, 8/10/2023, so it looks like this one, has the most green, all right? That is what I would consider, that was the original plan for phase two of the high school. So, behind that, then obviously are the quotes from the co-op with Tremco for that, and your, your quotes were roughly 2.1 million, 1.7 million, and 1.9 million, give or take, I mean, those are all, I mean, if you want it down to the penny, that's fine, but they're there, but, so it's...
Can you remind me who did the roof?
Uh, so, the consortium where we worked through Tremco, and then the, the Teamcraft was the one that did our first phase of the roof, and they did a, I'm just going to say, they did a fantastic job, and they were on time, on time, yeah, lowest bid, on time, I mean, the 30-year warranty doesn't have. Now, just from spec standpoint or scope of work, that's the last page on the back that you'll have, that's just kind of what we ask for from a scope of work. Then obviously, the second packet with the different green is what I would go to as phase two, part A, so...
Why?
Why? Well, let's just say, just go with the lowest bid, which I think in phase two was Teamcraft, again. And understand that when you're using Tremco, you're using the same materials, that's what you're looking at, you're looking at the same materials to match your thing. They're at 1.775, $900,000, or $900 for, it's 1.7 million, almost 1.8 million dollars. Well, our current capital improvement on encumbered balance right now, so obviously, we've encumbered to pay the loan lease right now, so that's already taken out of this equation, is 536,225.48. And then in our permanent improvement account, our O3 account, we currently have 1,037,424.33 with, we think by the end of the year, we'll get an additional PI that comes in, it's just part of our PI with probably around $300,000. So, if you wanted to kind of say altogether, like I did last year, we have roughly 1.8 million dollars, okay, between the, the capital improvement fund and the permanent improvement fund. So, if you do the first quote, which originally caught me off guard, you're basically saying you can go ahead and maybe pull this off, but then you're not doing anything else for your summer projects, which isn't good, so we went back to the drawing board and said, "Okay, can we do this in four phases?" Absolutely. So, the, the, the second page you have would be what we would consider phase, like, 2A, if that's what you want to call it, you can see it in the green area there, you know what you're looking at. So, those quotes came in at about 1,080,000 was one, 1,111,000 for another, and, did I put the third one in there, did I not?
It is.
Yeah.
1.322 million. So, I, I guess what I, my recommendation is going to be, we, we just don't have the finances to do it, if we want to continue to do what we're doing in the right way, to do it in three phases, we're just going to have to do it in four. So, we would, my recommendation would be to go with one of the options from 2A, phase two, or just, that's what I call it, but the, the, the smaller option of the roofs would be what I would recommend to be approved in the November board meeting, so they can get moving on that, you know, that's still talking over a million dollars, you know, with the anticipation of leaving us 700, 800,000 for additional projects that need to be done this summer. seven, eight hundred thousand dollars for additional projects that need to be done this summer, and still cautiously, as I would say, you always, in my mind, wanna have at least three to four hundred thousand just kinda there for whatever emergency. So, really, you're talking about maybe four hundred thousand dollars for summer projects. Now, luckily, you guys, basically, what we did was a bulk of the heavy-hitting last summer. So, we obviously have some paving things that we wanna continue to do. We have some concrete repairs we wanna continue to do, and those are gonna be coming up here. You know, um, I'm hoping, like I said, I promised you guys by December to kinda have like a preventative maintenance plan, you know, put together, you know, specifically for our paving, um, our ACs, roofing, things like that. But, you know, once the high school roof's done, all our, all our school roofs will be, I would, what you would consider new. So, it's, I don't foresee the large portion. I still think paving's gonna be a heavy need this summer again. Um, I can think, you know, like Marlboro's side lot over there, um, on the right side of the building, back by the kitchens one, and a seal for their turn. I know we talked about looking at that soccer lot. You know, I did get a quote on that. That's ranging anywhere between seventy and a hundred and fourteen thousand, depending on the thickness of the asphalt you wanna do. That's a huge area. Uh, Washington's got a small lot, um, and then obviously, the middle school and high school, you know, you're in pretty good shape. We've gotta do a little bit more in the high school. So, once we get the plan put together and working, I think we'll have a better idea. So, you know, it's just kinda more or less, once I make my rounds in the district with the, the maintenance crew and we find a good, a good idea, we can sit down, have another work session, and again, present to you, here's all the different needs, and then basically, what needs do you guys wanna accomplish? You know, knowing that we're gonna have probably a little bit of a smaller amount to work with after this phase, after this section phase of the roof.
But this is the one we need to decide on by November?
We do. It's typically the safest, yeah, that's what their, their recommendation was, only just to make sure supplies, get them on the docket and in there. Um, paving's actually bumped up a little. I mean, last year, we did paving and paving after the new year, uh, at least contractually. I think we did, uh, I think they're, everybody seems to be wanting to get paving done now all of a sudden, so they're booking up fast. So, we're trying to get a lot of different quotes of the final needs, and then trying to maybe bring that to the table a little earlier, too. Now, obviously, there's some concrete repairs, some safety issues and concerns that we still have floating around this district that we need to be aware of, that we need to take care of, but.
What about that walking track, like, around the middle school?
So, that was done, except for right around the front of the middle school. So, the backside of all that was done, yeah.
Just the part you can't see.
I was gonna say the part that I'm never on.
The part you never on. Yeah, so.
Um, I got a question.
Yeah.
Do you have the total square footage of both options available, or can you get that?
I can get that and shoot that. I didn't even think about putting that on there. I would've.
Okay.
Um, basically, when I asked them to go back to the drawing board, it was, you know, they, I just said, I need you to give me another option with a different price point. I did not wanna give them an option of what I'm looking for in a price point because then they just would've curtailed it to whatever it was. So, that wasn't gonna be, you know, a fair way to do about it, so.
Yeah, if we don't have a million. Bottom line.
I think it's smarter.
Bottom line is we do it in four phases if we don't have cash.
That's, that would've been the biggest of all the phases, and that was the issue. So, it was just, it's not, it's, it's, that's okay.
Can't spend money you don't have.
No, I am.
Talking about being fiscally responsible.
Josh's question's not a bad one because he basically, if you're gonna look at square footage, square footage. Basically, if we know we spent roughly a million dollars on X amount of square footage on phase one, what is the square footage ratio to phase two? You know, it's basically, I would assume, the question, you know, how apples to apples kind of scenario based on that. So, I can get that for you.
Any other questions, or?
So, also on there, I put potential summer projects. I think I talked about that a little bit. So, obviously, if there's, you guys are out and about a lot. If there's a particular something that you would like to see addressed, or just some quotes on when we get to that point, you know, after the first of the year, to have those discussions in the work session, let me know, because that gives me some time then to put together some quotes. And, uh, cost repairs like that. So, if I, and if I miss something, I'll, you know, I, I wanna make sure I get it on there on that end of it.
Did all your hard work?
That's awesome. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Well, I, before we wrap up, uh, Dan, I was just wondering, did you have anything prepared as far as the student-teacher ratio information?
Yes, and yes, yes and no. Uh, it, no, work session doesn't necessarily need to be on the agenda. That would fall probably under, under that.
Discussion.
The discussion for the review, and that's partly my fault, or I would've thrown it on there. I had to go back and rethink about what I was looking at, student-teacher ratios, Jonathan, for the May or November board meeting. Uh, so, I could say that I am decently prepared to give you some topic about it, but.
Would you like to present those at the November board meeting?
No, I won't take too long. All right. Josh's main question boiled down to what does, how does ODE? I think his question was, how does ODE do student-teacher ratio? I think I kinda, in some of my sarcasm, which comes off sometimes, uh, is the fact that you could call different people in ODE, and you'll get a different answer, and that might've been exactly what I said. We did, we did call. It's, it's the Office of Accountability, I think, is where you get this answer, is what I was told. So, we did call six people at the Office of Accountability and left six messages with the Office of Accountability. But through that, I did find where ODE says how they do ratio of students to teachers for record of a, in a school building in the state of Ohio. Of course, under the Ohio Department of Education. So, um, it was in a, a Student Opportunity Profiles Technical Documentation Book for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. So, at the, to make this, put this as simple as possible, it's the same thing like, uh, originally, I said, let's use the example I made in August. We have out three elementary schools, they're K through five. That's basically at two per grade level, that's about thirty-six teachers, or, you know, so eighteen classrooms. Because it says thirty-six teachers. So, in my mind, and still does not change, this is how I feel, that we, if we have roughly at that time, seven hundred and eighty kids in the district, I said it, our ratio, just do the math, is one to twenty-two, which is what I presented. All right? There are questions by people that, that number doesn't jive or is not accurate with what you would go if you looked on our report card. So, our report card, if you went on and, you know, I just, you know, Google it, and you go to your district staffing profile, you're, you're averaging probably, according to what I'm staring at right now, about one to eighteen, one to seventeen? So, why is, why are you telling me it's one to twenty-two? My guess is the, you wanna, if you wanna say that's how you're pinning out the question. Basically, how ODE does it, interesting enough, is basically, all, all staff members have a position code. All right, no matter who you are in this district, I have a position code. Maybe you guys do, I have no idea, but as a board member, but everybody has a position code. So, a teacher in general has a position code, what they call a two-thirty. Basically, they just take, you know, it says, uh, you know, the, the students enrolled in the grade, obviously, you know, divided by the teacher, you know, that's, you know, I don't want that grade. By definition, a two-thirty, and the simplest way to put it is anybody that gives a grade is a two-thirty. So, the thirty-six teachers that I said that we have currently at the elementary is accurate because they all give grades. All right, that's, you know, so I thought, okay, I'm in good shape right there. But so do our three PE teachers, our two music teachers, and we have two MD teachers in the multi-disability units that give grades. So, if you take thirty-six, which is what I use, cause I, you, you take three PE teachers, that's thirty-nine, two music teachers is forty-one, and add two MD teachers, that's forty-three. Take forty-three, you know, you do the math with seven hundred and eighty, your ratio is one to eighteen, one to seven. So, it's, how ODE does it, that's how they do it. And that's in the simplest way. I mean, I can kinda cut and paste this document, or I can email it to you, or whatever. I just kinda pulled it out of the technical document under the ratio of students to teachers in record.
But PE and music have those kids one hour?
I get it, and I, it's kinda like saying, okay, like, my point was PE doesn't reduce the student-teacher ratio. Even though ODE uses it that way, it doesn't reduce it. You know, that's the best example, you know, it, it, no different than at the middle school. Fine arts teacher, an art teacher gives a grade, so they get, they're counted into that. You know, somebody that teaches a, uh, a health class, or a gateway to technology, or whatever, whatever, however you wanna do it, if they give a grade, they're counted into this ratio, no different than at the high school. So, it just depends on how you present the numbers, is, is one way to say it. But at the end of the day, that's how ODE's kinda predicting that. I even went a little further and looked up, I'm all over the place here, sorry. Uh, this was from the National Center for Educational Statistics. So, they're using last year's data, cause that's the way it is. You know, but they also had us at seventeen point one-three student-teacher ratio. So, it's just, you know, I, I, I don't, I get that point, too. So, I guess I was just trying to clarify that a little bit better.
Who gave out that ratio?
Uh, the National Center for Educational Statistics.
So, that's our recommendation?
What do you mean?
Or that's optimal, is that what they're considering, or that's a nationwide average?
No, that's your, this is from Arlington. This is just from Arlington.
That's what they have.
Oh, okay. This is what they have from Arlington. You know, these are my notes. I just personally, I have some personal notes that I just kinda pull and look, you know, from that end of it. I think the, the follow-up in my, uh, you know, you know, would, would be a question, would be like, if you have, you know, you looked at my presentation, you went back to YouTube, and you said, well, okay, that makes sense to me, you know, but you still have, you know, one of the questions was, you should have certified contracts. Like, so Bob can say, oh, you know, we have certified staff. How many certified staff do you have? You know, in general. So, it's really, you're just gonna, you kinda gotta count out. So, I have thirty-six at the elementary. I call them core, you know, your math, science, reading teachers. I have nineteen at the middle school and twenty-three at the high school. You know, that's thirty-six, nineteen, twenty-three, seventy-eight. And, you know, intervention specialist, I got about twenty-four in the district. Now, mind you, only four of those are two-thirties. Because those are the teachers that are in the multi-disability unit. You know, the other twenty do not give.
They have what, six kids?
They don't give grades. No, they don't have six, they have no kids.
Oh, they have no kids?
Oh, like the MDs, yeah, they'll have six to eight kids in their class. Six to eight kids in their class, which is fine. They're giving grades. That's fine with me, cause it's, it's reducing the ratio size, but the others don't. We have tutors that are certified contracts, but they don't come out of the general fund. They come out of the federal funds. But they're certified contracts, you know? We have art teachers and all that, fine arts, music, you know, those types of teachers. We have about fifteen of those. Uh, we have an instructional coach. We have six career tech teachers. We have, uh, two, four, five point five counselors. School psychs, interesting enough, are, they're certified contracts. I mean, they are. We've got two of those. Uh, speech and language pathologists, we got two and a half of those. Those are certified contracts. When you ask for certified contracts, so if you, you know, and we have a district technology. So, I mean, if you, if I guess, if I add all those up, and you guys can correct me or go back and look on YouTube, I think it's around one forty-three. So, you're, you're, you know, that's certified contracts. Now, that's not how ODE does student-teacher ratio. They don't take one forty-three divided by your enrollment of eighteen hundred and sixty, or nineteen hundred, or whatever it is. Cause if you did that, we'd have a ratio of like one to thirteen.
And that doesn't include our preschool at all?
No.
Okay.
Preschool's a skip program outside of it that doesn't go into it. It's a different function. We don't code any of that, or, you know, in that aspect. But we do pay for those teachers. But we don't give them contracts.
Got it.
You know, I mean, we're not, you know, if you ask for somebody to poll, you know, so I think, you know, and you know, Patty Main gave a number years ago, or a few years ago, before I made the cuts, I did, you know, so I don't know where we're at with that. You know, I have no idea. I didn't do the math. I was more, I told you, I'm close to preparing, not a hundred percent, cause I was, I thought I had another week. But that's kinda, that's kinda the direction. I, I think the other point that, um, Josh asked was, you know, neighboring schools. So, and this, so this one's, let me be very clear, it was, you know, I wanted it as, I don't have it as detailed as I want it because it was, I was working through the process. So, this is basically a, an estimate, if that helps you. I felt schools closest to us were Canton South, Fairless, Minerva, Sandy Valley, and West Branch. So, when I reached out and asked for enrollment figures, so let's just use our enrollment of around eighteen sixty at the time is where I was at, give or take. Canton South is about eighteen, it depends, this is interesting, cause I had to talk to Canton South. Their total enrollment with career tech students is eighteen seventy-nine. But without career tech students, they're sixteen thirty-eight. So, it's a, you know, it's a weird funding mechanism. Fairless is about fifteen hundred and forty. Minerva is about seventeen hundred eighty-six. Sandy Valley, about seventeen hundred. West Branch, about eighteen forty-three. But that's, I told them to kinda include their career tech because those kids, like in us, they come in and out. Some don't, some leave and they're permanently. So, it's weird, like, Minerva, you know, when they go to drag, they're out. They're out, you know, so it's different. So, it just varies on what it is. So, staff members, and they didn't specify, I didn't get into it because I didn't, at this point in time, I didn't even have this answer. So, it would've been nice to say, hey, can you give me their two-thirties? And, you know, I'd get a better idea. I didn't have that. So, I just, I said, take out your principals, take out your nurses, and your, you know, who's yours, who teaches the kids, you know, type of question. Do you have that number? So, they were, they were basically, like, Canton South was about one seventeen, Fairless a hundred, but they also have fifteen forty as a, with career tech, fourteen hundred without it in K-12. So, that's, their, Fairless is significantly a little smaller than those. Minerva was about one twelve, Sandy Valley one-ten, West Branch about one twenty. You know, and if you look at just who our two-thirties are in our district, just who's, who would be considered teachers that carry grades? You know, we're roughly about a hundred and three to a hundred and four. Which basically keeps us at a ratio of about one to eighteen. It's, uh, let's, again, don't, I'm not, I don't wanna be quoted saying, here, this is what they said, you know, Canton South is this, or Minerva is this. No, I mean, these are just, can you please give me some really close numbers to where you're at? Cause that's what I was working through at the time.
Sounds like they're pretty close.
Um, I asked Lewisville. I did not know Lewisville was as large as what it was. The, um, I was told about three thousand students.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and their staff members were, were, they were, and she said this is not exact, too. She, she said, she was thinking about one ninety-two. So, but that's, I didn't even ask Alliance. I really didn't. I didn't put, I don't think it was apples to apples. Still, I mean, I can, ask Rob Gress, you know, and get some, but it's about as fast off the top of my head that, you know, or, you know, doing some homework that she kinda wanted me to look into.
So, these numbers are, are hard to get through the ODE, what you're saying? So, when we're trying to compare whether or not, and I, I guess your point is, are we, is your point asking this is, are we operating efficiently? Is that the whole?
Well, yeah, just, you know, how do we compare that?
You're trying to compare it to other districts. We're not getting, I mean, the data's just not, we don't even know if it's accurate. We're just, we're going off what people are telling you. ODE is not, it's, I'm sure you can get it, but it's gonna be.
Well, part of it, part of it, it's always a year behind. And to be honest with you, not, the position code is so critical. And, um, to be honest, we've been, we've been position coding staff wrong for some time. So, I think it's directly correlated to what gets polled out of EMIS, which directly shows, I'm not saying it's accurate and inaccurate. I can only be factual with what we currently have. That's when I said we. That's when I said, we spend a lot of time, when I look at staffing, purchase services, things like that. That's not just looking at who your teachers are by grade level. That's looking at that position code. Because, you know, I think as this moves forward, you know, I, I mean, I, you know, it's, that's important, because that's what ODE's going to pull. They're looking for a two-thirty. Okay, so I'm hoping a year from now, our ratio stays right where, you know, it should be, no matter where it's at. I, I sat one day Mark and just Googled Marlington in every shape, way, or form. And I, you get a different enrollment number, a different per pupil expenditure number, a different, depending on the website you're on. They're all uniquely different, so.
Well, I don't think it matters. It's a. It, it doesn't really matter where that number is, but if you're, if you're looking for comparisons, you got to, you got to pull those districts from the same sources. So, if you're saying eighteen, or you're saying twenty-two to one, and.
No, the easiest way for me now would be to say, can I have your two-thirty teachers, you know, whatever? And I could say, okay, next to Canton South, Fairless, Minerva, Sandy Valley, and West Branch. Those are our closest surrounding neighbors that I would say have a general population similar to us. I mean, with Lewisville at three thousand, that is not even a comparison worth making. Alliance, I'd have to take a look, but I got to believe, based on, I know where their, their sports divisions are. They're going to be significantly bigger.
I'd, I'd go a step further and ask for the two-thirties and the overall certified staff, just to see.
Well, the, I think that's, is what they told me was pretty much what they thought their overall certified staff was, because that's the way I directed the conversation with the superintendents, if that makes sense. So, and, and anytime you're talking to a superintendent, as fast as you can, and that's why I said, don't take it as written in stone. You know, if somebody calls me up and says, hey, what's your student population? I don't go look at my last month's enrollment. I have a pretty good idea. I'm going to say eighteen sixty, and maybe eighteen thirty. I, I mean, I'm not, I don't know. Up to the minute where I'm at, or it could be higher. You know, from a staffing standpoint, I can give you a rough estimate of what we have for staff. You know, I can say, okay, look at my birthday list. How many staff do you have on your birthday list? You know, it's, yes, it's, but.
Well, just, just looking at, you know, just doing quick math on these numbers, we're.
We're highest.
Yeah, we're, we're doing pretty well with what we have.
Fifteen point four, fourteen, sixteen, fifteen, fifteen. We're eighteen.
Again, and that, they could be including things that doesn't need to be included in there. You know, so I'm telling you my two-thirties, so that's why I said, I, they're definitely could be including, they could be including psychs, SLPs, which shouldn't be in there. They're not giving grades. But they could be part of their certified staff like mine. They could easily be throwing in their intervention specialists are in there. Those are the ones that aren't two-thirties, because we have a lot of intervention specialists in any district. But, you know, you really should only be counting the ones that are the true MDs, which I got to believe are probably in all of these numbers from any of these schools. So, I would say that most of those numbers would drop from a, from a ratio standpoint also. But from a certified staff, I don't know how much was there, because really, I'm saying one oh-three for us, but we're really one forty-three. But I'm knowing exactly, and they're not giving me exactly. I didn't dig in and say, okay, can you give me exactly your psychs, your SLPs, your intervention tutors, your title tutors, your, you know, those types of things. I was getting into that, but it was, I knew there was a discussion that to talk a little bit about tonight, so I just wanted to kind of have where I was at in the last few weeks.
I think we're spending an exorbitant amount of time on a lot of detail, and when we really need to be focusing on what we're doing at our school for the good of our kids. And you also have to take into consideration, you don't have any idea. I mean, these numbers don't tell you how many advanced courses they're offering, and some of the, the additional things that we're offering our kids. We're taking care of our kids. One to eighteen is a pretty darn good ratio.
I do, and I, and I, and I think that's what shows on here.
I think we're wasting an awful lot of time, and you've got other things that you need to focus on.
Well, it's obvious, it's obviously, this is so complicated, and I said, I've said that repeatedly, how complicated. You know, education is compared to when I was in school. It wasn't, you just, you know, you went and you had your teacher, and there weren't all, all these things that are mandated, regulated, you know, and I think a lot of people don't understand that. I mean, don't understand the complication that is here because of what is, you know, the regulations and the things that have to be followed. And it's not just as simple as sending your child, and they have, there are three first grade teachers, and your child's in one of those classes. It's not like that anymore.
What you said is exactly true. It's, it's more complicated behind the scenes. Some of these questions that can seem very straightforward, like this, you get into EMIS data, it's very complicated. EMIS has eighty-three different position codes, and so it's very easy to categorize someone, like, let's say, as a two-thirty, as a teacher, when really they're a two oh-four, or a medial specialist assignment, for example, eighty-three different ones. So, if you start comparing one district to another, you have to be very careful that you are comparing apples to apples. What Dan mentioned earlier, too, he asked, give me your numbers without career tech. Well, that makes a big difference. You'll find different statistics out there related to special ed. Are you including special ed? Are you including open enrollment? Are you including this and that? You really have to, it can snowball in a big way to get a really good number. I think it, I think Dan, and what I've seen, like even in his office, he has just a really nice display of like our staff. It's a really nice tool. You know, I think he's got a good handle on that with the assignment, and that's day to day. Like, the stuff at ODE, annual data, like, we do the EMIS submissions every year. So, yeah, you can do good comparatives using the same methodology, but you should pull it from the same source, like Mark was saying, if you're going to do it, like, yeah, use ODE data. In a way, it doesn't matter which things you're using, as long as it's apple to, apples to apples. But like, I've seen some analysis that the department's done in the past, too, where things will be way off, and you'll wonder why, like, we don't have fifteen secretaries. Oh, it's because, and then we're drilling in person by person, realize, oh, because you're coding, you know, your payroll clerk is a secretary, you're coding this person is secretary, this person is secretary. So, if you just took it on the surface with using the ODE data, you might look at something and say, gee, you've got twice as many people doing the same function. It takes looking deeper, because you have so many codes in EMIS for position. It can, it can take a lot of work. But it can be done. It just, you want it, apples to apples is the key.
Well, you know, to Kathy's point, how much time you want to spend on that? I'm just thinking, just from the high school perspective, all the different programs involved. You're hiring teachers. You listen to Renee talk about her, you know, her, her initiatives, and what she wants to do at, you know, the high school level. And that affects your staffing and specialized courses and so forth. So, yeah, it's just, you, you're never going to get a true comparison, no matter how, it'd take you forever to do it.
No, and this, that's my rough estimate to give as close as I can, and at the end, it's going to, it just goes back to the question of, if somebody questions when I make recommendations for cuts, or if I choose not to, I can say, this is why. All right, we have, you know, and it's not that this will be repeated again or not, it's just, you know, again, to clear the air. There, there's always going to be so many questions, and if that's a vote one way or another for that which situation, then I'll take it. You know, but at the end of the day, yeah, I've, hopefully, got everybody's explanation right now.
I, I appreciate, Dan, you giving the information, and I would just like to add that this has been really beneficial to me as a board member, to get this information and just go into the details. And I also believe there's a lot of members of the public that would appreciate the transparency. And when we're going to ask for money, and we're discussing a levy, that it's never a waste of time to look at all these details, especially with the quantity of money you're asking for. So, thank you very much.
One, one final note before we close out. Obviously, I will most likely have all intentions of making some type of recommendation. Of course, you guys can make your decisions at the board meeting and have, under discussion, when you want to do that. Is there any, I'm leaning towards PI. Are you asking me to look at any other options? Or are you good with me just continuing kind of making a right recommendation that way?
Sounds good.
Fine with that.
Okay. That's all I got. Thank you.
Are we going to, so were we going to vote on that at the next meeting? Whether we're going to look at putting that in the ballot?
So, in a, in a, this is interesting, in an election year. It is not a May primary. It's a March primary. So, the deadline is December twentieth. So, we have to have obviously one vote in November, so next Thursday, and that would then go to the auditor to certify the amount. Then from there, we would hold another board meeting, the next one in December, to move forward with putting the levy on the ballot. And then all of that would have to be turned into the Board of Elections, signed off by the auditor and the board by December twentieth to be on the March primary.
So, in the November meeting, we'll have a breakdown of, you know, what that's going to cost for one hundred thousand dollars of evaluation and so forth.
I'll speak with Alan Harold and John Oats, and then obviously our lawyers, because we'd have to have that written up, that initial, to go and get appropriated, the exact amount, yes.
Okay, good.
Hey, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you.